And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence for Robert Tazi and his family. Our prayers and thoughts are with him. Thank you. This is one of the agendas here, public comments. Are you listening to me?
Hi Russell, how are you doing? Good evening all, my name is Todd Russell. I'm the current Fire Chief of Waterways Police Number Two. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Brian Ollm. He asked me to come back and say a few words for him. I know Brian's last six and a half years working in the Fire Marshal Office and I think he would make an excellent Fire Marshal of the town. Very compassionate, always willing to help out, always was a punk all the way. So I would ask myself, my officers and members of Waterways, we recommend Brian Ollm as the new Fire Marshal. Questions, concerns?
Thank you very much.
Cool.
All right. I can't get really, I wrote too quickly. I'll announce myself, thank you. I'm from the Council on the largest member firm, Co. Wolf D.C. at 158 Pier Hill Avenue, Danbury. I'm here tonight to speak to you briefly on the award of a contract for tree services in the town of New Milford, representing Gentile Tree Care Company, which is the Gentile Tree Care LLC. And they received notice on January nineteenth that at the meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Purchasing Authority voted to award the bid for tree people, cetera to Emmons Tree Landscaping Services. And Mr. Gentile has protested this award because it violates the Charter of the Town of New Milford, which we've reviewed, which seems to say that the award shall be to the lowest qualified bidder or the, all the bids could be rejected and rebid if there's no qualified low bidder. From our research, it's been fairly brief, we took a look at the Purchasing Authority minutes of January seventh and it looks like four bids were open on this area of work. The highest range from one hundred ninety-four thousand, excuse me, from two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars to the low bid by Gentile of eighty thousand seven hundred dollars. Unfortunately, the bid was awarded to Emmons Tree Landscaping, which was about ten percent higher, eighty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Unfortunately, there's no explanation as to how the award was made. I looked at the minutes of the Purchasing Authority meeting of January fourteenth and it indicates after Mr. Mayor Gronback stated that since the first and second lowest bids were virtually the same, they were only ten percent apart, he felt it was in the best interest of the town to allow the second lowest bidder, a local company as well, a chance to work with the town. And it noted that Gentile has performed well over the past few years, but it's time to give somebody else a chance, which I somewhat commend from a human point of view. On the other hand, where we have a charter that indicates who take the lowest qualified bidder and we have a contractor, Gentile, who does work for the town for about five or six years, moved back to life about two thousand and ten. And actually, he'd sent a letter to Joe Tillman, the Public Works Department, indicating that he was willing to hold his rates for the two thousand sixteen year at the same rate that he was working last year. And he hasn't changed his rates to the town in many years. We've looked at some of the comments from the Public Works Department and it seems that Mr. Gentile and his operation have performed well for the town and they're qualified. And actually, the comments of the authority are that he is qualified. And quite honestly, he's very distressed with the fact that the public bidding process is not more strictly honored. And I've had experience, obviously, over the years with many types of state and local bids and it goes to the real confidence in the bidding system. And I think at this point, if you reject Mr. Gentile, you're rejecting confidence in the public bidding system when bidders feel that they make bona fide attempts to make bids and they're, in spite of being low bid, in spite of being qualified or rejected, it's not fair. And when it's not fair, the whole system suffers. So I'm going to ask the Council to take up the consideration of doing one of two things, awarding the bid to the lowest qualified bidder, which would be my preference, or at a minimum, rejecting all the bids and rebidding it. If there's a problem with the bids, then it should be rebid. But it's a little bit disconcerting and leads to issues which none of us like to face in terms of litigating public bids and it's not proper. So I don't want to take much more of your time, I have a full agenda and a full house, but Mr. Gentile asked me to appear, to present to you his concerns. I've met with him, I think his concerns are legitimate, and I ask this Council to reconsider what is taking place and to correct what may be a terrible injustice which doesn't happen to occur. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but otherwise, I just appreciate your consideration.
Mr. Marcus, if you happen to know, how many of the last five years has a tree contract been openly bid?
That I do not know, but my belief is that it has not been bid often in the past, the last few years. I believe it has been renewed, that's one of the reasons, that the rates haven't changed. That where the rate stayed and, you know, if you're familiar with that industry, the cost of operation has increased particularly fuel over the years now that it backed down again. But it seems to me that if the town's taken the opportunity to go out and get a bid, that they ought to follow the bidding process and spell out the charter. But I don't think they've done this very often.
Thank you.
Maybe that's one of the problems, that they haven't done very often.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mayor, thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. Approval of the prior minutes, Agenda Item Number Three.
So move.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Item Four, the Mayor's Comments. And I'm going to take a moment to address this issue of the tree bids because Mr. Gentile, Gentiel, I'm not sure how you say his name, did submit a letter to members of the Board and to members of the town. And he wanted to, and he was asking for an investigation, as Attorney Marcus had indicated. And I did some investigating and I wanted the Board to know that in two thousand eleven, Mr. Gentiel bid fifty-three thousand dollars and change, he was paid a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty. In two thousand twelve, the bid was continued, it wasn't put out the bid. So it remained the same, fifty-three thousand dollars, he was paid a hundred and fifty thousand. In two thousand thirteen, he was paid a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And in two thousand fourteen, it was rebid and again, he was awarded the low bid of fifty-eight thousand dollars, slight increase from the fifty-three that Mr. Marcus had indicated. And in two thousand fourteen, he was paid a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars and seven ninety. In two thousand fifteen, the same bid was in force, fifty-eight thousand, and he was paid a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And in two thousand and sixteen, just this year, he's been paid forty-two hundred dollars so far. And to give you some backgrounds, Public Works on December third have recommended to me and to the Purchasing Authority that we continue the bid without putting it out to, through the bid process. Continued was the Gentiles' contract. After learning that it was around sixty thousand dollars, I opted to put it out to bid. We opened those bids on January seventh. And on January fourteenth, I awarded the bid. And if these bid amounts, which the difference between what's bid, when you have somewhere in the range of fifty to sixty thousand dollars, and actually being paid a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and forty-two, doesn't raise a red flag, I don't know what does. The bids were actually very similar in terms of price because they are broken down into subcategories. And in the main categories, Mr. Emmons was, was actually a little bit below Mr. Gentiel's bid. And another category, Mr. Gentiel was actually a little bit below Mr. Emmons' bid. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure how much confidence I had in an actual bid of eighty thousand seven hundred dollars for Mr. Gentiel, when he'd been consistently paid in excess of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, following my bid award to Mr. Emmons, Mrs. Gentiel called my office and verbally abused my staff by yelling at her, by yelling at them. I found that to be extremely unprofessional. The next day, Mrs. Gentiel came to my office and verbally abused me. Now, I'm not sure if that's, she wanted me to award them the contract, but regardless of what Mr. Marcus is asking for today, the professionalism was certainly called into question following the rejection of this bid. And I do intend to conduct a broader investigation as to whether any civil or criminal laws were violated by the extreme discrepancies between the bids that were awarded and the amounts that were actually paid. And this will extend to all bids and awards, whether it be Public Works, Parks and Rec, involving such extreme differences between the amount bid and the amount paid. And it's worthy of investigation and I'll certainly update the Town Council on my results. But we will be looking into the specifics of this situation and whether or not additional legal action is required. I'll certainly make Mr. Marcus, Attorney Marcus, aware of our findings.
So is Mr. Gentiel disqualified or no?
He was disqualified under our statutes, Section two ninety-two, which does give the Purchasing Authority the right to reject any bid in which the judgments, in which in its judgment will be in the best interest of the town and the lowest qualified bidder meets the requirements for, for the awarded bid. So, it's not so much comment, but it's really my comment, I didn't want to get into a discussion about it, but yes, sure.
I see your question. On the, the status quo of the difference, all the bids made and then the amount actually paid. And do you know yet whether those higher amounts were paid against the original contract, the original work to be done, or were there, you know, add-ons or change orders?
That's going to be part of my investigation, but the bids were consistently in that fifty-three to fifty-eight thousand dollar range. And, you know, looking at the past history, it should call into question why, if we're paying a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, why that bid process wasn't amended? Especially since in looking back at the budget, I look back at last year's budget, it was budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for tree services. So it certainly raises a red flag in terms of what was done and why it was done. And frankly, the sense of entitlement from this contractor following the bid and the awards with other contractor was extremely disturbing. And I'm not sure if that's something that was fostered by individuals at the Public Works Department or just by a general sense of entitlement. But to call my staff and to yell at them and to let them yell at me, certainly raises some questions in terms of the response and the professionalism. Mr. Bass, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor.
Or a question?
I'm just wondering, is it appropriate to add this to the agenda since we're discussing this?
It wasn't, this was a comment, so I wasn't anticipating any discussion. So if...
I'd like to add it to the agenda if I have a second.
There's a second, any discussion on adding this to the agenda?
I'd like to have it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bear.
Mr. Bear, let me, I'm in here. Mr. Bear, I am, you're there. Mr. Mayor, close enough, five letters. Your last comment about investigating the situation, I would like to see that process go first before we bring it to the Council for open discussion and before the public for open discussion. So I will vote against adding that to the agenda.
So Mayor, pardon?
I'd like to just offer some discussion. I think it should be discussed because section, subsection F, rejection of bids that you noted, two ninety-two of the Charter, states the Purchasing Authority shall have the right to reject any, all or part of any bids or proposals, or to accept the bid or proposal or part thereof, of which in its judgment will be in the best interest of the town. Rejection or acceptance of bids shall be made within a reasonable time after the opening of the bids. Whenever the Purchasing Authority rejects any bids or bids, it shall state the reasons for such rejection in the minutes kept for that purpose by the Purchasing Authority. Such minutes shall be a matter of public record and shall be open for public inspection in the same manner as other public records of the town. The Purchasing Authority may weigh in with bid irregularities or informality. So when we discuss this further or not, my concern is, is that the minutes clearly represented that you were satisfied with Gentile's services.
Not true.
Do you have the minutes?
I don't, but that's not what they said. So this is why I think it is appropriate for investigation. And, and then what's the result going to be in terms of authority of the Town Council and the Purchasing Authority's decisions? That's certainly a discussion we should have, but that's my comment on the matter.
I would like to say that I'm not in support of adding this to the agenda tonight and also just, people need to be aware that it is not the Town Council's purview to approve this bid. So it is the Mayor's discretion.
With the Finance Director.
With the Finance Director.
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, speaking to my motion, the reason why I wanted to speak to this, which is why I wanted it as an agenda, not to vote on anything. But to talk about the concern that we have with the bidding process, so one of the things I will ask in writing, is that all bids, which then falls to our purview, all bids should be in our packets, so that we can see what bids go in and get appropriated, so that we don't have these problems. Because if Mayor Gronback's stating that there is an issue with bids and properly awarding the bids and properly following up on them, I think that's something that we as a Council should be very concerned about. So that was the reason why I asked to bring it up as a discussion point, to talk about some of these issues.
Mr. Ward, that you say?
Yeah. First of all, I think this is a legislative, I mean, excuse me, not an executive decision, not a legislative decision. So I disagree with bringing it forward to the Town Council. Pete, I've served with you for sixteen years, all of a sudden now you want bids to come to us? What was that for the last fourteen years?
Well, because the Mayor just brought up that there's a concern. So I think we owe the taxpayers an obligation. When you're talking about issues like this, that's a very big concern.
Mr. Chamberlain?
I would echo Mr. Ward's sentiments, basically. Where was this Council, specifically, where was the majority of this Council? When bids came in at half of what the town openly ended up paying, where was your oversight? I was concerned about what was going on financially under the old administration. With every stone we see to turnover, there seems to be more reason to be concerned about the way the New Milford was being run fiscally. If there had been the concern years ago about the relationship between bids and payments, there could potentially have been hundreds of thousands of dollars saved, therefore I'm opposed to the addition.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Mr. Bear?
Let me ask the Town Attorney. Executive decision, legislative decision?
Aha! I think that's a point of debate that is not per se legal. I think this is a political debate and I think weighing in from a legal perspective would be improper for my, for our office.
Thank you.
I think the two sides at that point can be debated.
Thank you. And, Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to say where we are on our watch, I believe in our Finance Director, who's sitting right there, who is a part of the bidding or Purchasing Authority, who still is part of the Purchasing Authority, I believe in him, I believe in everybody else that cares about our town. Now, if there's a concern about maybe there is extra work that we've done that caused additional billing, because a couple of years ago, we had a pretty big hurricane. So I don't know. So those are all issues that we need to talk about in a very bipartisan manner to make it work, not accusing anybody of anything, just trying to get to the root of a problem. That's the only reason why I even mentioned it right.
That's fine. So I think in terms of...
So I have to ask one question.
Sure.
I, I might mind, you know, the agenda either.
Right.
Just, would you report back when you find out because it might turn out to be that there should have been a change order, an additional bid, and it never was done because of the bad operational procedures that may have been occurring? But in any event, I'd like, myself and my constituents would like to know why a fifty-three thousand dollar contract turns into a hundred and fifty thousand dollar payout.
Absolutely.
So if you would just report that...
That is my intent to, to re...
Thank you.
To address that with the Council. So there is a motion pending to add this tree bid item to the agenda. All in favor? Indicated by I saying aye.
Aye.
And three?
Just on a procedural point, I believe there was a request by Mr. Bass that there be a...
A roll call. Sure, okay. So let's do it by roll call. All in favor? Let's see how...
Walter, go around.
Just walk around. Okay.
Walter?
Okay.
No.
Phoebe?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
And Jay?
No.
Pete?
Yes.
Yes.
Justin?
No.
Frank?
No.
Okay, then those have it. So, moving on to the next item on the agenda and the wider notes. I'm happy to present a commendation to Mr. Charles Aldrich for his forty-two years of service, Aldrich, as a firefighter, as a driver, as a fire policeman, as a board member of the New Milford Fire Department. He is an inspiration. Please don't get upset, I will come to you. And I want to thank his brothers at arms that are here as well to support him.
I'd like to add a few words, and I know how you people sit around that table feel. In the half years of supportive education in town, there were all of us on the Board of Education, I was appointed to a building construction committee. And we built the addition, the addition built on Betty Bone School. We finished that, we built the addition on Terron Noble, was the high school. We finished that, we bought the property and built Hill Plain School. We finished that, when we bought the hip property, they built the school there. And the, the, and that was done in ten years and we spent a lot of the town's money there. The last building committee I was on was appointed as video building committee for Plainsville Fire Station. But I know what your evening means, Doc. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I couldn't have done that without the help of Lady Dexter.
He did the typing before.
Number six on the agenda is the appointment and reappointments to boards and committees. We have a reappointments first. Is there a, on the chain of motion?
There is a motion, so the appointment for building and property... You know, we have a contract, we have two months, twenty twelve, we have a date of two, six nine, we have a commission, about the weekend, we have a contract, twelve months, twenty one, we got into, we have a contract, we have a contract, and the one is having a meeting, twelve months, twenty fourteen, we have eleven thirty, twenty fifteen, like on the lot, garden, sharing doors, twelve months, twenty fourteen, we have eleven thirty, twenty seventeen, we have a connection, all clear. David Sillway, who was listed, you know, the cabinet isn't on hold, we'll just let you know about that. And twelve months, twenty fifteen, we have eleven thirty, twenty nineteen, my fellow one, we have a, that number, eleven, one, one, twenty fourteen, to eleven thirty, twenty fifteen, twelve months, twenty fifteen, to eleven thirty, twenty fifteen, we have a commission meeting, George Garnett, twelve months, twenty fifteen, to eleven thirty, twenty fifteen.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Francis?
The reason that we have these sort of back takes, so to speak, is because they never were, they never got it done when they should have been?
Right. So to make it formal and official, we've included the prior terms and included it into this term. Yes, please.
Just a housekeeping, but you know, for half of our protection agency, by Charter, you're playing a very, you're actually a member of that agency. And I was looking at the latest elective list from the Town Clerk's Office, and it doesn't seem like we had extended Dave's term yet. Shields had expired in November thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
So I didn't know if you wanted to amend this, maybe add that from the number or something?
Sure.
The terms would be the same, yeah, on plain, the plain...
And further amend to be then for that. Okay. Any objections? No?
No.
So what's the terms?
It would be the same. That's a front of the amendment?
Yes. Sure. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The second part of the agenda, Agenda Item Six, is the appointments for the primary. Entertained a motion?
A motion, Public Affairs, Alan, Alan, Muhammad, Karim, one twenty five, twenty sixteen, to eleven thirty, twenty seventeen, Commission on the Arts, Betty Lynn Manlar, filling vacancies, one twenty five, twenty sixteen, to eleven thirty, twenty eighteen, Commission on the Arts, Alternative, Robert Broke, one twenty five, twenty sixteen, to eleven thirty, twenty eighteen, Clean Energy Commission, it's not the task force, it's all of those kind of things. Doyle Leon, for one twenty five, twenty sixteen, to twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen. So Commission, Scott Chamberlain, one twenty five, twenty sixteen, to eleven thirty, twenty seventeen, Pension Committee, David Silver, one twenty five, twenty sixteen, to eleven thirty, twenty seventeen, and Sewer Commission, Scott Chamberlain, for one twenty five, twenty sixteen, to eleven thirty, twenty eighteen.
Mr. Pension? Pension Committee, and then on the other page, in short.
Well, I just got it. Yeah, we, we, I mean, we have a...
Senator Burton, make it. Second, most favorite.
No, no. Sillay is the Pension Committee.
Yeah.
And Sewer Commission is Chamberlain.
Right.
I'm sorry, I did hear you said Pension Committee.
As been a second by Mr. Bass, any further discussion? I would just note that, you know, we still are accepting recommendations from the RTC as well. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Item seven on the agenda is the annual New Light Run, and there's a request to close Youngsfield Road, as well as portions of Husutani Avenue, Boardman Road for the New Light Run, road race by Fashion and Timing LLC, scheduled for June third, two thousand sixteen, in favor of autism awareness and New Milford High School, not across the track teams. So, second. Further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Think we had somebody that, did you want to say something?
No, I, I, I don't need to. I said, um, parking permits and everything that will approve, so.
Okay. Well, come on up and just, you know, say that. You came off way, you were prepared to say.
What you're meant to tell him. Sorry that I, I.
Uh, don't worry. My phone. Yeah. No, it's all right.
Run forward.
The camera's that way. Look that way.
No, my name is Michael, um, Fast Track Timing, putting on the Moonlight Run. They did it last year as well. Everything's pretty much the same, except we've made, um, a couple of additional safety measures with the police. Uh, phoning the road from Assortec all the way down to Bed and Still. Uh, we have all of our permits, everything early. Uh, if you guys want to copy, there's extra copies. You know, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the big thing is that the, a hundred percent of the proceeds are going, net proceeds are going to charity this year. In past years, it's been a for-profit, uh, raise, you know, just was, um, a portion of the proceeds, this is going to be a hundred percent of the proceeds, are going to go towards autism awareness and, um,
Pretty good.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We can just put in minutes that it's going to prove by your office, offer bits and fire, fire marshal. I mean, fire, uh, these.
The police, yeah.
I have a legalist.
Oh.
Sure.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Ward.
Yeah, um, the town is noted by its events. Uh, and I think this is a good event for New Milford. It's got a, it's got a good following from outside of the town, as well as the state of New England.
Yeah.
And I like this. I'm glad it's back. I know it stumbled a little bit there and I really felt bad when we didn't have it. But it's a great idea. Now that you couple that with a charity, that's even better.
Yep.
So you're to be commended for your work.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bass?
Just the housekeeping thing, uh, copied to the secretary. Did, did you have your copy?
Yes.
Okay. I can do that?
Last page has the, uh, feature.
I can. And Mr. Semansky?
Mike, most important, how can people sign up for the race suits us from the newspapers here? So let's get the word out.
Uh, it's newmilfordmoonlightrun.com.
Okay.
It's not up yet. I've waited for all the, other, other cases, sometimes people put it up before it's approved.
Are you running for? Uh, if you're doing.
I voted up to be your.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here. Item eight on the agenda, talking of help. On the, uh, agenda is the approval of a resolution authorizing, uh, Mayor Grumbach to execute the memorandum of agreements between the State of Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security and the Town of New Milford for the, uh, two thousand fifteen Homeland Security grant. So we're going to lose it by. And, uh, Mr. Kresman was here. Anybody had any questions, um, regarding this grants? Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Outstanding. Outstanding.
Item nine on the agenda, Department of Public Works, uh, Turf Field, uh, Construction Committee, updates. And I believe we're going to have Dan Stanton on tonight. Uh, Mr. Bass?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification, uh, this should be under the Department of Public Works Subcommittee with the Councilman.
I know that. Thank you.
I know.
There we go. The physics of this, a little, a little help.
All right. Thank you very much for being here. I'm Dan Stanton. I'm county chair and also on the Turf Field Committee. Um, I hope in your packets there's some information from point slide, um, basically describing the progress that this committee has made. First part I had wanted to mention was there's a number of committee members here and several that aren't. But I'd like to point them out if they could stand up, um, just kind of just make sure I'm missing anyone. Joe Faiya, um, Drew Alhage, Doug Skelly, Bob Gregory in the back. I saw Wendy Falabot, um, and our Board of Ed representative, which is great, plus Post Tower. Um, and I hope I'm not missing anyone. I said it was great to see him at the last meeting. He's, he's not there all the time, but he's definitely there in some way. So it was just great, you know? Chris DeCaro, Mel McRiordan, um, and Kevin Timples are also members of, they're just not here this week. So, um, this group, you know, started a while ago. Um, there's a feasibility committee with a number of these people were on, which is great. Um, we've been having weekly meeting meetings since April. Um, and continue in monthly meetings since November once construction began. Contractor has been working, you know, built at least at that period of time, weather permitting and so on. We continue with our consultant engineer, which would be a C group, um, to have weekly meetings with H.I. Stone, which is the contractor of, for this bid. I have a list of what they've accomplished to date out there on the site, you know, simple things, site safety, erosion, sedimentation control, all those important items that are necessary to complete a project in a safe fashion. Um, we're working on coordinating with both the AD, uh, Kupovinsky, Kevin Monet, that, the new facility manager has also been on board, asking questions, making sure that he's getting up to speed and making sure his staff will receive information in a timely fashion. And also Principalship Group, um, obviously is there, um, from our first meeting, um, society, which is great for his support. So we're in progress out there. Um, I just kind of wanted to, um, throw up some budget numbers just to make sure that we all understand, um, where we are. Payments will, um, continue, um, on a monthly basis. So thus far, we've, uh, processed two invoices from H.I. Stone and several invoices over the period of time for the consultant engineer. Um, and that's that number. We have the following to go. Um, and if there's questions, just, just feel free to ask with the process for that. So we need to install field curving out there. So we're sort of on this delay. Luckily, we kind of missed out with the storm. Um, so that will allow the contractor to continue working economically because otherwise they'd be, which is not, which really isn't productive work for them. So they're going to, um, pause, I guess is the best word, and wait for better weather if that is the case. We do have some project, projected work, like installation of new stadium and north field lightings, which will be LED lights. Um, they'll also be full cutoff, which will remove that halo effect. Um, and then once the curving is in place, they put the stone in place underneath the carpet. And, uh, we continue from there, um, through installation, new track, new surface, all those sort of items there. We also are very excited, like I said, that we're with the Board of Ed. Um, we'll be meeting with them on February second over at the newest building to discuss, um, you know, next steps and answer any questions they may have also with this project. Um, and then also, like I want to say, begin the transition because that's an important part that'll, you know, be this large investment will become their maintenance item, which is extremely important. Um, and then our next committee meeting is on, um, February tenth, which is our monthly meeting. Um, and then following all of that, basically four months to go until this project should be substantially completed in June.
Questions, Mr. Semansky?
Where, uh, are the kids that play their spring sports? They usually use those two fields?
The athletic director has made arrangements. Um, also it's winter, uh, busing children to turf field for the indoor track season, um, also for the track and lacrosse. I did not heard officially, um, where lacrosse is finally ending up. Um, I need to follow up on that.
That's the spring.
That's the spring. So it'll start around.
And then there's nothing else until after the two opening day?
Correct.
Ms. Rickerson?
I think I have two questions to, um, for Mr. Semansky to ask. I think the first one's, you have substantially completed by June, uh, twenty sixteen. Can you kind of give us a better idea of what substantially completed would look like? And then also, I don't know, you might not be the best person to ask, but since we're busing kids now to outside schools for their spring sports and swimming practices, as well as games, home games, how much is that, do you have an idea?
I don't have any idea of what that cost would be, but I mean, back to that question, I'm not sure how they're creatively, you know, handling that, if they're, they're busing these, um, that, 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 that. Ask that question. I'm not sure, um, exactly for that. The other vital one is what is substantially complete look like? Pretty, depending on who you are, what the definition is, lights tend to be up and on. Um, track surface is going to be done and fields are going to be playable. There's going to be some small punchless type of items, you know, stabbing the grass. Depending on when in June that happens, depending on the weather, obviously, um, that'll be a concern. And then there may be smaller slight amendments that you can take care of.
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Dan, also just, would you let everybody know too that we lay a contact with the observatory as well? Any concerns they have, you can talk to them and they will onboard it as well.
And I'm going to mention that I forgot our chairman, which is Pete Bass, so.
He hasn't been there either. But I heard you have that.
But I mean, as far as other users of the site, yes, the observatory was concerned, um, especially with the lights. Obviously, it's very necessary for their operation. Also, this could be impactful to their, um, services and sessions that they hold, um, whether it's on a monthly basis, on the second Saturday or whatever basis. Also, they have various plans, um, for their site, including, uh, the request, the current budget proposal, um, for their programs and, and going forward. So we want to make sure that they, um, we're not impacted or impacted in the swing possible and also that we accommodate for the future for them also.
Ms. Semansky?
Um, Dan, could you talk to us about the water main there?
Yes.
The financial implications there is and...
Well, the two situations happened. One was, as you're saying, occasionally you find unmarked utilities. So probably a month ago or so, they, they struck a unmarked irrigation line out there at the high school. So that caused a fair amount of flooding. That was controlled. Um, that was during the period of time when they were still identifying utilities and tracing where they were as part of the project. So, um, the second part was about two weeks ago, there was a water valve which was what the service line to the high school gets fed off of. So that was, I want to say bad timing. They were not working in the vicinity of that. And, um, that was controlled and taken care of on a Saturday after a smaller, um, leak was occurring. Um, we had already begun talking about one of the utilities, which is a water main traversing that such under advisement. So, um, that is something that the committee, you know, will talk about hopefully for the school facilities and as a committee on that, um, for what we want to do, um, with that action.
So will you come up with a, um, if it's going to come out of the town, might you pay for this? Or is it something from the construction or?
This would come out of a, a number of sources. I don't know, let's see for the, the, of what the recommendation would be or, or what this, you know, body would have. It's a, it's a, it's on the site of an existing water main easement that existed when the school was built, um, and continues in service to this day. A PVC pipe, you know, so it's not tough to iron or, um, steel or anything like that in place. It could last for very many years.
Are there, um, questions?
Mayor, the joke was only maybe one of us says.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I perhaps add a little more information on the water main. Uh, clarify a little bit. Joseph Bell, uh, sent in call to Wayne in Milford. Mayor, thank you for having us here today, Mayor, Councilman, and we appreciate the opportunity to give you these updates. I will say that, um, Mr. Stanton's done a phenomenal job, uh, working with everybody on this, uh, turf committee, to see that it's going smoothly. He's been involved in every step. And, and I'll explain this to Water Main in a minute. I just wanted to add that I've always said, and one of the things I think is important with this, uh, turf building committee, is that the reason we have been so successful and moved at such an incredible pace here on such a big, big project is because of the people that sit on this committee. I'm a citizen now, but at one time I was involved and sat at this table. But what's the most important part, this made me most effective, is the citizens, the public that have helped us on this committee. And a lot of these, uh, folks are just that. They work in the community, the construction industry. They've given us a lot of information, uh, and help at this time. Aside from all the politicians that were involved in it or still are, or on some board admission, I think our success goes to those who normally would not be involved in these matters and it's the community that stepped up. And through the first phase, we, we met weekly, the months on end. And we only stopped that while we started construction now because there's less for us to do. On that note, also, uh, this is a, a project of inclusion of everybody that we can to, to be a part of it. The school, school facilities, the principal, the athletic director have been in almost every one of our meetings. Observatory, they have, they, they've spoken to us and I think we met everyone at their request. They want a little bit more privacy fence around the back of the property, wing concerned, door concerned. We put that in. We, uh, addressed lighting issues for them. And, and we've included the observatory in it. So we think all the parts of this that we have, uh, and, and, VPW, what, everybody is involved and I think it's what's made this project where it is today. And what I, and the reason I, I, I got to help you on this is the water main, because that became an issue very recently for us. And just, I took a few minutes today and I actually, thanks to color copiers, I ran off, um, a drawing of where this, and, and colored in. This is, technically this is quite good for me to pull up. Where the water main runs, didn't give you an idea of what happened here. And, and I have ten copies here. Sort of pass them around. You know. And, uh, as in any building project, uh, things, uh, come up. And this water main came up, uh, and popped to the surface, literally. Uh, the, the main was put in, uh, during the high school construction. And it runs at a very unique angle, to say the least, where it literally pops out into the middle field just under the track. And that's about where that, uh, valve, uh, leaked water, uh, about a week ago. So what was brought to us, and we don't have enough information at this time, but we will, was brought to us is we asked out the contractor, H.I. Stone, for some solutions. And there's several that can occur here. Uh, the valve has been fixed. We could, uh, cover it over with dirt, put the track and the turf field on top of it and hope that that valve lasts for eternity. If it, one issue that came up was that should it, uh, once we complete this project, that valve, at any time, it would bubble to the surface underneath that brand new track and that brand new high-tech, uh, field, both of them are, are, these are top of the line, uh, state of the art track surfaces and artificial turf surfaces. So if that water bubbles up on there again, it would literally pull out all of that. It would, it could cause the rubber on the track to literally melt and run down the street. So there were a couple of proposals. One is to put a valve at either end of that, uh, of fields on the lane, on the line, so that there's a valve north and south that could be shut off quickly. There's a little bit of concern that valve or that thing decides to leak at midnight on Saturday. Nobody sees it till Sunday when it's floating downhill. So as quick as you can get that shut off, it's going to take a little time even to get rid of it. The next option was to divert the main, uh, along sidewalks that run adjacent to the fields and literally straighten out the main. This way, should it ever pop again, it would be outside these brand new fields and track. The initial estimate, based on the amount of pipe that would have to be redone, was literally based on a home call to the war company by H.I. Stone. Uh, they said possibly a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, based on, and, and some of the members of the committee who were sitting here tonight, uh, in work in construction, they thought that was pretty steep, uh, for replacing a water main. Uh, it sits approximately six feet on the ground. And so it, they, they thought that was steep. Uh, we only found about this last week. So wait for more of the funding and information on what it type of move.
Let me ask you a question, though. You said it had bubbled up, you know, did the turf fields committee or contractor know about this, uh, water main when, when these designs were created?
It wasn't, it, we did, they, they did not. They did not know that the main popped, uh, came that far into the field. Uh, you know, as you've seen it when I colored this in, they did not know that. Most everything was marked and sometimes digging around. There are several storm drain caps that were found under, under dirt. Uh, but those are easy to remedy. They just be raised and it'll be covered and marked. And now actually we covered the rest of those valves with, with turf. And now, actually, we covered the rest of those valves with turf. So, and marked so that they're easily accessible. But, no, that was, that was a surprise to everybody. They didn't move at that angle on the field.
I just have a question, Joe. So, was the fact that the track wasn't there when the line, the water line was put in originally?
No, nothing was there. That was when they, when they began the initial.
So, when they put in the school and then the track, nobody looked to see that there was a water line on it?
Of course, if I may, my understanding is that it's traditional. And if any kind of excavation work about to commence, that firm come in and essentially survey it so that the job site is compared against any existing known electrical plumbing, whatever. So, my question is, call before you dig. So, the question was, did anybody call before they dug? And second of all, did they just not find it?
It's, it's.
Well, just to describe the process, I mean, the plans are a compilation of available information at the time that they're developed. The cul-de-sac dig would typically be performed both as part of the soil boring that occurred before the design was finalized and so on. Maybe does not depict every possibly known or unknown utility that's on the site. In this case, like I said, the contractor has performed the cul-de-sac dig on there. There's subcontractors that perform cul-de-sac digs. And this is flagged out by Aquarian Water Company for that location and identified as something that we need to identify in the process through testings. And that was drawn during phases of the construction that we've done for other various utilities of that communication, irrigation, et cetera, on the site. Again, getting back to the valve that failed, this water valve to the high school, and the contractor was not being at that location. Essentially, it failed, simply failed of old age or just.
Or trucks running out of it. There's a lot of excavation on top of it, right?
Typically, they're designed in roads and things like that, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a gas line here? I was asking.
We have a plumber there.
Is there water up there, you have a comment?
Yeah, I wanna go back to the vice chair's question here. I don't know if anybody ever worked with grass plumbing. In the olden days, you had water lines, you had galvanized pipes, you had brass pipes carrying water. If you touched one end to repair a leak of a brass pipe, it leaked at the other end. I can't believe that there were no specs showing a water main. A water main. I'm not talking about a little aqueduct here, that's a little spring. You're talking about a water main. And then, you know, if you hit the water main and you're saying, "We're not responsible for a shut-off valve," well, once you hit that water main, that affected that shut-off valve. Who's gonna be responsible for this now? The vice chair asked the question. I did not hear an answer. Somebody is saying a hundred thousand dollars. Bogus, bogus. I was in favor of this project, but this is bogus. Who's responsible for this?
So, the council and Mayor Stan, it was a valve on a shut-off that leaked. And, you know, these are bits, so when they leaked.
Yeah, but that was the second one. You broke the water main.
We didn't.
And then it leaked.
What they, what they found caused the leak was our dirt agencies inside the field. So, just to the northwest of where that end is at the location.
But you hit the water main?
No. We did not hit the water main when it was constructed.
Oh, that was not my understanding. My understanding, there was a break in the water main.
The valve leaked. There's a valve, when it, when it blew out.
Oh, there was only one leak then?
It was two incidents.
The water main, the water main did break?
Two incidents.
Or it did not break?
The valve, this one incident, that water that I saw coming out of the ground, that wasn't a valve. That pipe was broken.
That's a water main.
That was irrigation pipe.
It's still a pipe.
No, I'm just saying. It's a pipe, but it's not a water main.
Well, it's coming off a water main.
Well, everything is water main.
Yeah. So, at that time.
Okay, let's go back to the basic question. Who's liable for this?
And easement crosses town property. I mean, I think it's the best way of describing that. You know, for the first fifteen years that the high school was there, you know, there was no issue with this water system. Obviously, infrastructure does not last forever. You know, what are the, what's the best option for the town and for the future?
I still want to work clear, Mayor, it's a habit. It wasn't a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage on here. What we're, what H.I. Stone went and got a price for was if we moved that water main to straighten it out, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So, we don't have a cost on repairing that valve.
Yeah, it is repaired currently. It's in place and operating normally.
It could be left alone. But there's, you know, an associated risk with leaving alone because the apex runs right under where the new field will be.
Mr. Wargill? I haven't been to the best.
The issue is, the fact that it leaks is kind of a side issue. The issue is, there's a valve there and the pipe goes under which will be the artificial turf field. Last year, if it leaked, they just dug it up and then replaced it. When the turf field goes in, that's not an option. They can't, they have to tear up the whole turf field and the track to get at that pipe. So, we're changing the easement. They have a right to their pipe as an easement. But we're putting this beautiful field over it, and they don't have as easy access to it. So, as much as I hate this, I think we're going to have to move that pipe so it doesn't touch the field or the track. Because we're denying them their easement.
So, who is responsible for fixing the valve, the Aquarian?
That's already done.
It's already done, Aquarian did it.
And Agreed to that?
Yes.
And they paid for that?
Well, they bill us.
They bill us?
We don't have the.
I don't have a specific answer on that. That may be covered under some.
I'm realizing.
Normal. Maybe it's that maybe a build that has the school procedures because it's their water valve the same way that if you had a house, a valve, they would be responsible from that point or if your house was in physical.
Well, I guess, out of mind is the turf committee's been wrapping back to us with more information about where we plan to be going forward. I mean, I kinda, I feel what Frank says, you know, you know, straighten it out because the less that we want is four million dollars to go.
I, we fully agree. We just got this information about a week ago, the basic. And it was, the numbers kinda caught us by surprise. So, we want a lot more information as to options and prices to make changes, either valve in on either side or straighten it out. I mean, I think it's pretty evident to most of us, if the cost isn't outrageous to straighten the pipe out, we never have to worry about the less than we want. We spend this kind of money, have water do what it does, cause more damage than any other.
I just, a suggestion, but maybe there's some other portion of the project that could get deferred and, you know, fix the pipe so that the field will be fine? I don't know. It's a possibility too.
These are all options we need again in just a couple of weeks. And by that time, we will have more information from our hardbacks.
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna feedback our council on the matter. We're gonna get together and we're gonna gather the information that we can pass on to the council with all the different areas.
We're not meeting yet until the tenth of February. And that's just to decide what to do next. And then, if we move the pipe, I'm assuming that's gonna be a big project. So, how can you estimate what kind of delay? I'm assuming we gave June fifteenth as a substantially complete. And now, we're talking about a large project of moving a water main pipe. I'm assuming that June fifteenth is going to be affected?
I think we can operate under both, you know, assumptions of worst-case scenario where the project would have to come to a standstill for this work to be done. I don't believe that is the indication. That typically, this feeds the southern part of New Milford, so there's a large number of customers, so it can't be out of service. It also supplies the high school. So, the high school can't, you know, shut down for this any differently than if it failed unexpectedly. So, you know, the best time to move this would be a planned event after the end of school. That would be something.
We can still work on turf fields before that's.
The initial indication from the contractors, in essence, moving the line, what we would do, they would cap off what's there and catch two points in on it. So, near the sidewalk. So, it actually wouldn't interfere. If that plan went through, it wouldn't interfere with the majority of the construction involved. And that's what our contractor has told us.
Let me just ask, Dan, you know, in looking at this diagram that's been passed out, if you did bypass the spend in the easement, you went straight from left to right along the subject of the page, are you going through anything? What are these structures down here? Is it just a parking lot?
There are various structures that are on any school site. I think we would pick the path that both makes sense to give room for future maintenance as one criteria, but also the constructability. I mean, obviously, there's the school driveway and sidewalk there, which are options.
This is all paved over here already.
Change the cost. I mean, you're not on a, on a constructed site.
Hi, Bailey, Mayor. There's enough space where the fence is just beyond the sidewalk. Let me get north, south, bigger west side of the sidewalk. And it would be just in the dirt that's torn up from now, currently. So, you know, it would be, from the committee's point of view, if we could get it done through the area that's under construction now, not interfere with sidewalks. And we're looking literally to a path, least resistance. And least cost.
Understanding things happen and it has to be moved, or it won't be moved. I agree with you on how we still, but I just have a bigger thing. We would, as a council, wouldn't have known that there was this particular couple of incidents that Mary Jane not pointed this out. I just like to say that although this is a large contract and perhaps whatever it costs could be fit in our four million dollars we approved, there's also the same amount of incidents could happen that it would push it out. And I'd really rather hear about it before we get there than when we get there. So, for myself, I would like to know when you go through this, if you keep the council apprised of things such as this? You know, it's not a big one, but, I mean, I wasn't kidding when I said there's a gas line there. I don't, I really don't have those gas lines. But something like that could have been catastrophic. And I don't know what contractor was supposed to be aware of this. But I, it makes me wonder what other things in other schools might be there that somebody at Stan and your area would check that for future. So, we really need to check before we dig.
Mrs. Francis, I just wanted to note, you know, to that, this map of the easement and the plan, they date September eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen. So, you know, I mean, BSC knew back in September.
Yeah, I mean, a contractor, you know, that's just sort of common sense. You know, a contractor checks before they put their shovel in the ground and realizing no one would have actually assumed it was gonna take this job up for sure. But, you know, they did. All I'm asking is to just keep us up to date on anything else that comes up because.
It would be our pleasure. As I said initially, we have done this project trying to include and inclusive of everybody at the potential being involved in the school and the observatory and the community. And that is what has, I believe, been our success with this project. And we will appear before this council as frequently as, as you would like to see us.
Could I have one last?
Sure.
I wanted to be clear on exactly what happened. I get the irrigation pipe. But as far as the main itself, was the exact location of the main known or unknown at the time that the field was engineered? In other words, did they plan laying the field on top of the existing water main? Or was that inadvertent? And bring, and potentially brings up questions of whether it was properly engineered?
The current field knowing about that, or the previous one, the high school located the field, the same field?
Essentially, when the turf field was engineered, presumably, they looked at the site, came up with whatever ramifications were going to be involved in the installation of a turf field. If this was known, presumably, one of two things happened. Well, presumably, one of two things happened. Either it was not, its whereabouts was not known, therefore, they didn't deal with it. Or, in the alternate, they were aware of the location and they just planned the field over the top of the water main. And I'm not clear from what I've heard tonight which route was taken because I think that there's legal significance as to which one of those scenarios took place.
We don't have that answer at this moment.
I think we do have the answer, actually. Like I said, this is dated September fifteenth, eighteen, two thousand and fifteen. So, you know, it clearly had to do about it back in September.
If the contractor is responsible, he is responsible. And we're, we're here to see if this is done properly and in all legal matters, just as some other incidents have come up with just the dirt alone. The contractor was responsible for.
Mr. Wargill?
Yeah. The map that was passed out articulates the pipe, the main pipe. That's down sixteen. That wasn't disturbed. What disturbed was the irrigation pipe, which came off of that. It's probably a three-quarter inch pipe or one-inch pipe. But it wasn't the main pipe. Now, it's hard to know where those are. But this is the main pipe. Now, the question I have to keep, we do have a contingency. Do you know how much is in there? I got a feeling that, how we can cover this under the contingency line and not raise the price, the overall price that we have. That would be my hope.
There is, I'll tell you on this, the presentation and the prices involved and route and, you know, effect on the schedule at the end of the day as well. Because, I know we went long. My office gets a number of requests to consider, you know, since it hasn't been put in yet. And I believe an email was sent out to you also, Mr. Bass, about, you know, the fill that did not involve, you know, the chrome rubber and the company, I guess, has solicited us providing that material. Is that something that, I know you looked into it, you know, previously, but is it something that, you know, you can discuss in conjunction with the committee and the contractor about, you know, the infill, the chrome rubber versus inorganic?
The next week, Mayor, we'll bring that up again, that email. And then, we're gonna talk about it because we did look through all the different fills.
Right.
And we'll redo that again.
People keep seeing, you know, Senator Blumenthal is looking for, you know, something through EPA, a study. And there's more warnings being issued, you know, in other states. So, I know, I heard, you know, the presentation about the safety of the chrome rubber infill. So, is this something that continues to come up? It hasn't been installed yet. So, you know, I would ask that the committee consider that and, you know, make a recommendation.
We will.
Any other comments, discussion? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And thank you to the committee, the members that are here. Thank you. Okay, number ten on the agenda. Parks and Rec. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Item eleven on the agenda, Office of the Tax Colored, January two thousand and sixteen, reprints.
Don't move this present.
Check it. All in favor? All in favor? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Mayor. You can actually make a friendly amendment to the act, you put the balance after January reprints of fifteen thousand, six oh six forty five.
Very good. Without amendments, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries, thank you. The Department of Finance, item twelve, update on Vans. We have somebody to make an update here. Greg Ospal or? Mr. Jankowski. Oh, jeez. Before you do that. Mr. Jankowski, I know it's, it's not necessarily on the agenda and you got sidelined with all the, "Ruh-rah." But I did want to present this plaque on behalf of the Town Council and the Senator Milford, to recognize your twenty-six years of service to the Town of Milford as the Finance Director and for a thank you for a job well done.
Thank you very much. Be part of many, many advances and where the town's gone over the period. Talking about computers today, we didn't even have desktops when I started here. It was green screen. Sorry, it's fantastic. It's kind of fun, man. Actually, one other question. I think back, I'm humbled and thank you. We did sell vans last week. We sold fifteen nine, six hundred and five thousand worth of vans for roughly six months, July twenty fifth, two thousand and sixteen. A number of reasons why we rolled them, rolled and refinanced, refinanced nine nine six and then we added on the turf fields and the, the, this kind of group, which brought the fifteen, six oh five. We paid thirty-one cents, you're paying thirty-one cents per thousand, which is a hell of a rate. To say there was a fifty-two thousand dollar premium, that pays the interest we owe on the ones that were, were repaid. He did well. This will give the mayor and the new administration time to decide what they want to do, July twenty fifth, two thousand and sixteen. They have an opportunity to turn into bonds, permanent financing. They have an opportunity to get an upgrade. And I think they're, they're well positioned.
And the reason for that is in large part to your leadership, so thank you very much for that.
You should.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a quick question? Since Ray's never going back. It's not the time to ask a question. Well, up there on the podium. The time to download is free. Do you know on the Rhodes Three dam and the Bridge and Rhodes dam and fuel station, could you just have Mayor go back, just email us the amounts that have been expended out of that, just to add a little respect to that?
Damn. We turned that into Road, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And Road Three, we have two payments left. One of the, made in July, I think I have one payment left.
Oh, no, what I mean is we expended those funds on Rhodes, yeah? Or has that been fully expended?
No, no, no. Nine hundred thousand left. Dr. Public Works recently, they, they haven't spent, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Jankowski.
Thank you, Ray.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Enjoy it. Thank you.
All right, this brings us to the executive session part of our meeting. I'm going to ask the public to please wait outside while the Town Council is in the executive session and we will let you know when you're ready. Thank you very much.